Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the June 1st, 2021. It's hard to believe we are already in June this year. This session will be conducted remotely and council members will only participate electronically. For those viewing online, please ensure that you join this meeting using the following website, If by chance you use, you join this meeting using any other link, we ask you to log off and log back on using that website. And with that said, the first items are workshop. And item A is pavement management. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Hold on one second. I'm going by an old mayor script. The first item is a pedestrian safety action plan.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilors. I've moved Mary Ann Brincheck, our Director of Public Works, in. I've also moved Patrick Adams from Maine DOT, but he seems to be stuck in cyberspace. I'm not sure where he went, but I moved him from one list to the other, but he hasn't popped up on our panelist here.
My worst fear. No, just kidding.
Yeah, I'm not sure what's going on. There he is.
Here he is. Yeah.
So I'm gonna allow them to get settled in, but it'll be Patrick and Mary Ann that'll lead us through the pedestrian safety action.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
I'm still trying to get my video going. I've been having some computer issues lately, and I just lost everyone a few minutes ago, so hoping there we go. Thank you all very, very much for allowing me to be here this evening. My name is Patrick Adams. I am Maine DOT's Active Transportation Planner. I work with communities across the state on bicycle and pedestrian issues. And this evening, I wanted to have the opportunity to share with you the Heads Up Pedestrian Safety Action Plan that we created for the city of Lewiston. Hopefully, all of you had a chance to get a print copy of that, had a chance to look through it, see if you had any questions. But this is a project that came about about five years ago, when in 2016, we started to notice a dramatic increase in the number of pedestrian crashes and fatalities in the state. At that time, we convened a multifaceted group with representation from state police, local police departments, municipalities, planning organizations, American Automobile Association, AARP, Bicycle Coalition of Maine, disability advocates with the sole purpose of trying to figure out what we might be able to do to help reduce the number of pedestrian crashes and fatalities we were seeing in the state. We were just nicely into that process when Lewiston actually came to the forefront of our attention. 2016 was a rough year for the city of Lewiston. Through the summer and into the early fall, you had experienced a couple pedestrian fatalities, I believe, out on Sabato Street, maybe. But what really, what really caught our attention was early in November of 2016, which is when Jaden Cho Sargent was on his way to school and was struck by a car on the way to school and was killed. Thirteen-year-old in a crosswalk. It was difficult to see that morning. It was overcast. I don't know how many of you remember what happened after that, but local residents were very frustrated and upset with the city. They asked to convene a public forum to share their concerns, and it was hosted by the city council. The school board was also there. Maybe many of you were in attendance at that, at that meeting that evening. Myself and Steve Landry, who's our State Traffic Engineer, were there that evening. And many of the people in the room had brought up some, some very frank concerns that they had. And it's not, this isn't just, you know, to point fingers at, at the city, but they felt that they weren't being heard, and they wanted to, to express their concerns in a forum and with the hope that people would listen. Based upon what I heard that evening, based upon the conversations that happened and the frustration, I truly believe that what I had heard there that evening was really the start of something that could make a difference in, in many communities across the state. And so Lewiston was really the genesis of this Heads Up project. I thought, as I listened to people, I bet that there's a lot of people throughout the state who would like to have the opportunity to share with Maine DOT, to share with their municipal leadership their concerns around pedestrian safety, both where the problems are and what they see people doing. And that's how we came up with the Heads Up project. We, we talked about this with our Commissioner at the time, David Bernhardt. And one of the things he had asked us to do was to, to look at crash history for pedestrians and plot it out on a map. And when we plotted all the crashes for the previous five years on a map, especially when you stood back away from the map, you noticed that there were blossoms. There were places throughout the state where there seemed to be a strong concentration of pedestrian crashes. In the end, as we looked closer at it, we identified 21 communities across the state that had a higher-than-average level of pedestrian crashes. Knowing that we had limited resources, limited funding, limited time, limited human resources, we decided to focus on those 21 communities, of which Lewiston Auburn were a couple of those communities. The communities ranged from Sanford, Biddeford, Saco, Westbrook, Portland, South Portland, Lewiston and Auburn, Bath, Brunswick, Topson, Augusta, Holwell, Waterville, Winslow, Camden, Rockland, Bangor Brewer, and Old Town Orno. So we covered a very large area. When we looked at the data, we saw that those 21 communities, when you look at the population within those communities, represent only about 29% of the state's population. But those communities were responsible for almost 68% of all the pedestrian crashes over the previous five years and about one-third of all the fatalities. That's why we chose to focus on them. We held two separate public forums in Lewiston. The first one was in May of 2017. That was our Pedestrian Safety Forum. It mirrored a lot of what happened in, in Lewiston's public forum. I believe that happened in January of 2017. But we talked about pedestrian safety. What can keep you safe? What are some misconceptions about safe behaviors? But more importantly, we wanted to meet with people who lived, worked, and played in Lewiston to identify where the problem locations were from their perspective. Where did they see the most dangerous places to be a pedestrian in your city? From the information we learned at that forum, we were able to prioritize the locations based upon real-time voting that we did with the participants. And we had another meeting, which was our Site Safety Review in July of 2017. At that meeting, we took those prioritized locations. We looked closer at them to see what some of the contributing factors might be that contributed to pedestrian safety challenges, as well as what we might do as some alternatives to improve conditions. Finally, in November of 2018, we had our second and final forum, and that was our Safer Walking Forum. The first forum and, and that safety meeting was all about the infrastructure. The second forum was really about how can we change behaviors? And we realized that behavioral change is partially about education, but also about enforcement. So within that meeting, we identified educational strategies as well as enforcement strategies that could help encourage better behaviors. We took all that information and Maine DOT partnered with Bicycle Coalition of Maine to deliver this project. And we came up with the report that hopefully you have in front of you, the Heads Up Pedestrian Safety Action Plan for the city of Lewiston. For each of those priority locations, we identified a wide variety of potential actions that could be implemented at the local level. Additionally, we identified other alternatives that could make conditions better in the educational realm through enforcement, through encouragement, and through evaluation. If you happen to, to look through the report, you saw that there were a lot of options there for you to choose from. I always talk about this report as kind of a buffet line that we're asking the community to go through. We do not expect any community to just gleefully take all these alternatives that we have put before you. Instead, like any good buffet, we'd like you to pick and choose those items that you like. What, what tastes best for you? What resonates most in your community? What do you see as the actions that can best be implemented? In some cases, we may have some low-hanging fruits and things that are low-cost, easy to implement, and you may want to choose to do those right away. Other items may take more political and financial capital to, to implement, and will take more planning time. Those are some things that we might need to push out a few years. What a lot of people were concerned, what a lot of communities were concerned about early in this process was, is this just a to-do list that Maine DOT is putting in front of you? And we don't want it to be that way. Maine DOT and the Bicycle Coalition of Maine have made a commitment to be true and equal partners with each of these municipalities when it comes to this. We've engaged municipal staff and local residents in the development of our actions and identification of the problems. We also see Maine DOT partnering with those local communities for the implementation of the action items that you choose to move, to work forward with. And when I say that, I mean that Maine DOT has the intention of bringing money to the table to cost-share the implementation of strategies. Again, we're working under limited resources. We know the city is working under limited resources. So our intent is to work with staff, work with Mary, work with other folks in town to identify and prioritize action items so that we can address the higher priority items first. As a direct result of this project, we've actually implemented some projects in town already. At the location where that original crash happened back in 2016, we've already done traffic calming installation where we did some bump outs, and we did a rapid rectangular flashing beacon to improve the safety at that location. Forgive me if I say it wrong. At the Bastille, at the church, the Catholic Church.
Basilica.
The Basilica, sorry. I, every time I always say the Bastille, and I know that's not the right word. At the Basilica, we did some improvements there with the pedestrian crossing to help make it safer to cross there and create ADA-accessible facilities there. We've also got another project that we just put into our work plan this year that we're beginning to kick off with your Public Works Department. And Mary can talk about that if should like. But like I said, we see this as a partnership between Maine DOT, the local municipality. Nothing is, nothing is mandated that's in this report. We, we ask that everyone approach it as, as a series of choices, and, and you select what will work for you at any given point in time. And I guess the easiest thing for me to do is ask what questions you may have. Oh, there was one other thing. You notice that the report is broken into two sections. The first half of the report is the report itself. The second half of the document are the appendices after that Canary Yellow page. The first part of those appendices are reference documents for bike ped advocates, municipal staff, around what our policies are, both at the local statewide level as well as nationally. And then the second half of those appendices are the documentation for what we collected and what we generated in the meetings with local residents and the people who participated in our meetings. Sorry about that. That's one thing I wanted to mention. So questions? And Mayor, I don't know how you want to do that. I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you, and I'll do the same thing you just did. Questions? Yeah, you know, we're pretty informal during workshops, so nice overview of how we got here, so we appreciate that, Mr.
I know it's fast, and it can be overwhelming.
Yeah, and I, you know, I'm, I'll speak for myself and not for councilors, but I haven't had the opportunity to do a thorough review of this report. I did, you know, breeze through it. But councilors, any questions, concerns? Councilor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there a digital version of this that we can share with the public?
So, what, here's the thing. I have learned in the process of doing this process that municipalities, elected leadership in municipalities do not like local residents and others to find out information about such reports until they know about it. We have treated this as a confidential document, so we have not released this to anyone until we've had the opportunity to share the document with you this evening. With that being said, I sent Mary a copy of the digital version. There's two documents. One, that's the base report. One, that's a set of the appendices that she is then able to share with staff, and she can do that anytime after tonight.
And we also have a copy in the clerk's office for anybody who wants to go in and look at a hard copy. So we've got both of those options.
And as of right now, Mary, my plan is on Thursday to come to town and drop off the rest of your printed versions that I have printed out for you.
Thanks a lot, Patrick. I appreciate that and all the work that's been put into this. And just to give you all an update as well is that we did receive $250,000 in grant funds to take some action on some of these items in the upcoming year. So one that's dear to my heart is an educational program to look at behavior and use the middle school students that lost in middle school to help us kind of how to educate other students, that they come up with their own campaigns and create different ways to do that. And then we're also looking at targeting three intersections: Sabato and Oak, Sabato and Wood, and Main Street at Montello. So those three intersections will be fully updated with rapid flashing beacons, as well as some crosswalks and some handicap ramps. And then Lisbon and East Ave have some improvements being done this year through other funding that we've got, as well as Canal. So we are addressing different pieces. There was a second report that was done from HNTV that looked at those main quarters a little bit closer with some traffic reporting. So we've merged those two together and kind of look at the highest priorities. And as I said, we had most of them in the queue, but we had some unexpected additional grant funds that we ended up getting from the state as well, so that's kind of what's current for what's in the funding for next year, and you'll see improvements coming.
And on the, on the, on the digital report, will you create a link that you can share with the council for that right on?
Absolutely.
Good, thank you. Counselor Jalinas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for this report, Mr. Adams and Director, your comments, Director Brincheck. I really am excited about this project. I especially appreciate the tagline about the two-way street thing. As a cyclist and a runner, I can speak for my co-cyclists and co-runners that, you know, this is a really important priority for people that want to live, play, and work here. So I, I really appreciate the work that's gone into this. My question for you is, you talked about there being two or three forums that led up to this, that started in 2017, I believe you said. Is this product, this project's finished, and are further forums going to happen or no? It's really just about now getting the word out.
I think that is dependent upon the municipality.
Okay.
What, there were two key pieces to this project when I started that I had to fight some opposition on. And the first was, we tried very hard for this not to be a blame game type scenario. We did not want to point fingers at drivers. We didn't want to point fingers at pedestrians. Instead, what we wanted people to do was look inwardly at themselves. What can I do when I'm driving? What can I do when I'm riding a bike? What can I do when I'm walking to keep myself and other people safe? We have no real control over the behaviors of others, but we have control over what we say and do. And so, as opposed to deflecting blame, let's take positive action to make things better for everyone who's out there. The second piece was that I didn't want this project to be seen as DOT swooping in. We land, we hand you this book and say, go forth and do good, and then we walk away. We saw this as an ongoing project. We knew that we had a concentrated element on the front end, but we saw this as being something that would likely last five, 10, 15 years in the long run, because we don't want to lose the momentum we gained through this public process. We see the next steps as being something that's not fixed in this report, but something that's ever-evolving as new things are learned. Maybe there's new problems that emerge in the city as, and new opportunities that present themselves. So I think if there's an interest in more forums in the future, I see that as a possibility. I do know that in talking with some of the senior management in Maine DOT, historically, up to this point in time, the Heads Up project has been exclusively a pedestrian-focused program, because Maine DOT has never had a pedestrian-focused safety program in the past. Working with the Bicycle Coalition of Maine, we've long had a history of doing bicycle education. So we really wanted to focus on the pedestrian element here. And that's where the, the crashes and fatalities were occurring, so it really made sense. However, as we move forward, we know that that bicycle element is still out there, that there's still a need to, to work on those elements. And so as the project moves forward in the future, we're going to move into addressing bicycle issues as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Patengue?
Thank you. I, I haven't had a chance to review this document, but it's pedestrian safety and things of this nature have been near and dear to my heart for quite a long time. You know, and it's, you spoke about a lot of, a lot of good things. For me, it, it comes down to slowing down cars. There's a lot of science out there about how much the survivability drops for an accident, once you're going over 20 miles per hour. At 40 miles per hour, hitting a pedestrian is almost unsurvivable. 30 miles per hour, it's, it's a real long shot. There's a lot of, a lot of data out, out there about 20 miles per hour is safe. And if you've been out on the roads, especially as people starting to get back out into the world, it's like a NASCAR track out there. It's insane. It was a little bit nicer when it was just the essentials on the road, because there was nobody out there. Well, we gotta, we gotta slow these cars down. So road diets, you know, these, these bump outs are fantastic ideas, and a lot of, a lot of it, I think, is an education piece as to why these work and why these are safe. Yeah, they may be inconvenient. You know, some other things to look at, too, are reducing right-hand slip lanes. Those are, those are deadly for anybody on foot or on a bike. And then just looking at ways we can move towards a more multimodal city and really prioritize other forms of, of transportation and moving around the city. It has many, many, many benefits and healthier citizens, boost to the economy. It, it's there. We just need to look at it. So thank you for this.
You're very welcome.
Yeah, it's interesting. Lewiston has long had a pedestrian, bike ped, pedestrian committee. But yeah, we, you know, and we've invested, I, I think, significant time and money into pedestrian safety and sharing the road. But that doesn't protect you from fatalities, as we can attest over the last few years, so. Counselor LaJoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope I'm coming in. I, I, your presentation was excellent. I think you covered a lot of areas in the Lewiston area. We, we can do more or as much as you contemplated within these plans. However, it comes down to pedestrian education and how to use these crosswalks. For example, Russell Street by the college, I saw an individual and, and I could stop in time. However, I saw an individual, pressed the button, the lights went on, he never looked, and just stepped out in the road. And I, you know, so, so we can do, we can make that place as safe as possible. However, it comes down to the individual utilizing that area. Another example is by St. Peter's Church. Marvelous job, right on top of the hill. Everybody can see it. So I happened to go to a funeral a couple of weeks ago. I was in the crosswalk. I was the only one using the crosswalk. The others were on the outside of the crosswalk on both sides and crossing the street. So, you know, again, I, I think a lot of it has to be citizen education, and especially starting with the younger children. I happen to be a firefighter, just like we did in firefighting, be careful for fire, so on and so forth, and started in early age. I happen to be a firefighter, just like we did in firefighting, be careful for fire, so on and so forth, and start at an early age. So thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you. You know. I, I don't want to dismiss what you said. We, we've, we've long had a Safe Roots to School program where we work with. Local school programs to do bicycle and pedestrian safety education. And, and we strongly believe in the importance of continuing that. But the data tells us that children are not our biggest problem. Our biggest problem are middle-aged men. That's, that's the group we're really trying to educate and we need to focus on and we need greater opportunity. I'm not saying women aren't also at risk, but the numbers are pointing to the fact that, that. Mid thirties to about sixty is, is where a large number of our crashes occur.
And does the data support that the drivers are the ones that are, are, are at fault or?
To be honest, our data shows that there's enough blame to go around to drivers. Pedestrians and cyclists. At least once a year. For the last five years. We have had a situation, you know, we know that impairment is a real big issue. On our roads and we tend to think of it being drivers. At least once in each of the last five years, we have had a fatal, a pedestrian fatality on our roads. From a pedestrian who was incapacitated and laying in the road when they were struck by a car. They were unconscious.
All right, thank you, Counselor.
That is not, that is not a driver issue. Sorry.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A time long ago in a place not too terribly far away. I used to devour the manual on uniform traffic control devices on a daily basis. I have read this report. I can truthfully say I haven't digested it in its entirety. But I noticed a number of things in there that the city could benefit from. Already it's impressed Counselor Pettingill to the point where he sounds like he could be a traffic enforcement officer of some kind. Very well put. And I guess as far as education goes, Mike and I don't have to worry. We're beyond that middle-aged group where. We're going to be cited for something. So, but anyway, excellent report. I do hope there are a number of traffic signal issues within the city. I brought several of those up over, over my term today. And I know it all revolves around money. Unfortunately, if we had an endless pit of it, we would have accomplished all of these things some time ago. But there are a number of deficiencies in our signal system, not the least of which are some of our pedestrian signals and features. I just hope that the one thing we don't go to, and I didn't notice this in the report anywhere. And we don't want anything to do with speed tables and speed bumps. Bump outs and that sort of thing, great. But the plow driver, you'll have every plow driver in the city on top of your back if you start putting speed bumps into try and. Regulate the flow of traffic, just like you don't use stop signs to regulate the speed of traffic. Don't use speed bumps, not in, not in Northern Longwood. But other than that, excellent report. Thank you for joining us tonight and we hopefully have learned something from this and we'll get to work on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clement. I can't guarantee that I didn't, didn't have at least one or two references to speed bumps or speed tables.
You'll hear about it if you did, no problem.
I've worked for the department for many years. I'm used to the feedback.
Instructive criticism, of course. All right, thank you, Counselor Pettingill.
Thanks. So it's, it's been a long time and I feel really bad that I'm this rusty about it. I used to eat, sleep, and breathe all this stuff. And I, I can't find it, but I know I've seen some cities that actually have lighted. Instruments that they'll actually project something onto the ground at a crosswalk. To make pedestrians aware that they're, you know, that they're stopped at a crosswalk because everybody's, you know, head down looking at their phone. I don't know if you've run across those, but they're, it's pretty neat. I'm, I'm not a fan of the, the strobing lights. They cost a tremendous amount of money and I don't think that they get utilized half as much as the good intention is there for them. Not to mention if a driver doesn't see anybody in the crosswalk, they're not going to slow down even one, one mile per hour. And then the other thing too, that I forgot to mention was talking about road widths. And the, the data and the science out there just about how the more we build these strods. That it increases vehicle speeds just because it's wider and it, and it feels safer to travel at such a higher rate of speed. So a lot of this, a lot of, a lot of pedestrian safety is factored into how we design our roads. And how we really need to scale back on that.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions or comments from council? Or staff? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Adams, for attending the meeting and thank you, Director Bradshaw, for. For your input on this subject and we look forward to seeing some of those projects take, take shape.
If, if after you've had a chance to digest this a little bit more, if. If you would like to, to follow up with additional questions, just use your normal process. For reaching out, whether, whether it's through Public Works or City Manager or through the mayor. I'd be more than happy to go over things in greater detail if there's an interest. We're looking at setting up a meeting later this summer to come down and talk about some of the recommendations and begin. Highlighting some of those that are the priorities in the city. And begin looking at what we need to do to make it happen in the future.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate you giving me your time.
Okay, with that, we'll move to item B, a review of our proposal to create. An affidavit of residency for our elected officials. I would assume it's Counselor Clement presenting on this or who's presenting?
I can certainly open the item, Mayor. I'm just trying to make the moves here. If you can bear with me one second, moving folks around. Good evening, Mayor, City Councilors. I will introduce this item and certainly ask Counselor Clement if he has any. Comments to add. Counselor Clement did bring a proposal forward. To consider an affidavit of residency to be added as part of our election process. The affidavit would be completed and filled out by. Candidates, once they submit all of their, their nomination papers and it would be signed on. In your packet, you have the draft of what Counselor Clement has proposed. As part of the process, review process, we do have the city attorney review this and what you see in your, included is. Not only what was proposed, but then the city attorney's edits as well as comments explaining notes. Any edits in, in just his reasoning. I suppose at this point it might make sense to ask Counselor Clement if he would like to introduce the item or add anything further than. What I've already brought.
I think you've done your usual good job. I did send an email out to all of my colleagues and all of the elected officials earlier. I believe it was last Thursday or Friday. I bring this forward after being contacted by a number of people over my term questioning. Residents of elected officials, whether or not these people actually resided where they. Claimed to reside or supposed to or limited to reside. And recognizing that we didn't have really. Any means of real enforcement here. I did some research and suggested that we craft this ordinance. That would require anybody running for office to file with the city clerk no later than the closing date. Of nomination papers, a sworn affidavit of their residence. Okay, and also obliging them to notify the city clerk. If their residence as required by that office, in other words, if they were a ward counselor, ward school committee member. Rather than an at-large or the mayor, they would have to divulge to the city clerk. And I don't recall that I put a time limit in and that's where Corporation Council picked up on that. And I believe he changed that to ten days. As it now stands, I know of no requirement. If, for instance, if I were to move from my ward to any other ward in the city or move out of the city. I don't know of anything requiring me to report that. I mean, I do forfeit my office under the charter. But there's nothing requiring the individual to own up to the fact that they've moved. And then by doing this, having the affidavit sworn, it subjects the individual to the pains and penalties of perjury. Which is a Class B felony under Maine Criminal Code. And I don't think that's asking too much for somebody who serves the public. To be able to put forth with integrity the place where they live and the fact that they are still there. I mean, it gives us a little bit more transparency and things, less apt to have questions from people. I, I think under the circumstances, and that's why I've done it. It's not means of punishment or anything like that. I just think that. Given the national flavor, having to do with elections of late, anything we can do to. Improve integrity and transparency is a good thing. And that's what I saw here. I believe Corporation Council saw much of that in his remarks and put forth some very good suggestions. And I would leave it at that and ask that everyone. Take a good look at it and hope they can support it. I think it's a good thing for the city. It does not harm anybody. It does not put any extra onus on somebody. Other than that they raise their right hand under oath and say, yeah, I live here and I will notify you if I move. Period. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Counselor Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Clement, for those comments. I do see this as a burden to some folks and particularly to renters in our community. I have moved locations during my terms and went from an apartment to a house and now I have that. Stable permanent address, but prior to owning my house, I moved five times within the city, all within the same ward. And so. Having to go through this process every time would have been onerous to me as someone who. Who had some difficult living situations and chose to move to a different location a couple of times. I think I personally have a lot of trust in my colleagues here and on the school committee. Given rights to a lot of folks who don't have transportation and they live where they say they live. I mean. And those folks happen to be the renters who I've known on those committees and so. I, I think it's very clear in charter that once you move, you know, we've had that a couple of times on the school committee, not on the council. Where folks have had to move from their ward and they, they owned up to it and it stinks that they had to roll off their seats. But they were honest about it and forthcoming and I, I just would rather see the, the best in people than the worst in people, especially in this scenario. I mean, I can understand why council had the comments that they did and I, I think those are wise ones, but. I do not foresee myself supporting this. I will also just recommend that you. If this does move forward, that the mayor gets added to this language, only at-large school committee is kind of accepted. From the ward requirement, I would add the mayor in because it seems a little inexact as it's written.
Yeah, you know, not in the too distant past. I mean, there was. An elected official in the community that moved and kind of wasn't so quick to let people know that they had moved. And ever, you know, ever since I've been involved in public life, I mean, there's, there's been questions of elected officials. Not living where they say they have. So it is an issue that occurs. I'm not, you know, and I'm not arguing for or against this, but. You know, I just, it, it is an issue at times. And then, you know, to have an elected official hold off. As long as they could before they made an official notification of a move. So I just wanted to share just that general information. When this was, you know, when I first saw this document, I looked at it like, yeah. It's an affidavit swearing the way you live, you know, and then a requirement that you notify the clerk when you move and providing a daytime. So. It didn't give me any real heartburn. With that said. So Counselor Clement, I know you probably want to chime in, but why don't we go through councils and then if you have some, you know, either rebuttal or whatever, then we'll come back to. Is that okay? All right, thank you, Counselor Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just looking at a couple from comments that were made earlier, I would agree adding the mayor to that list of positions. And I think that makes sense. I'm not sure White's not added. Probably just a mistake. So they should be all elected municipal officials. And I do want to point out too that it looks like this doesn't say that if people move within their ward, they have to notify the clerk, just if they move outside of the ward. So moving within the ward actually wouldn't, you know, as long as you're still in the ward, you're fine. Personally, I, I support this language. I think it should go further and actually require us to. Update our change of address, even if we do move within wards. I've served Lewis, you know, Ward Five here in Lewiston between City Council and School Board. Since the beginning of two thousand seventeen. And I've moved twice since then. And I can tell you, the, the second time I moved, it was literally like moved the day of. I still had an apartment. The first time I was not in good financial situation and I spent a couple of days where I didn't have a place to live. And when you're in politics, you worry about what people are going to say. And I was so worried that someone would. Accuse me of something and try and take my seat that I literally slept in my car one night. So I was too afraid to just call my grandma and say I was sleeping there because someone would. Make a rumor that I'm not in my ward. So I do take it very seriously. And I, I, I find it very insulting to the people when someone moves out of their ward and still tries to represent it. I don't know a case of that actually happening, but. It makes sense to me that we should look out for that safeguard. Because I know there are some laws that exist where like you can pretty much not get caught, like they're not enforced, even though you're supposed to do it and do the responsible thing. And that's unfortunate. And so I don't, I, I want us to make sure that we're being held as accountable as possible. So I would even increase the language here that says if someone like me moves within wards, I should be notifying the city clerk. My constituents should know where I live, that I actually am, you know, in their ward. And that's my take on it. I disagree wholeheartedly with the idea that someone cannot live in their ward and represent it. I wholeheartedly disagree with that concept and I hope that's something that the, the city charter never, ever adopts. So. I think those are, those are like my main comments for now. So I'm definitely supportive of this. I'd like to see the language, you know, become a little bit stricter, to be perfectly honest. And require us to, you know, when we do move within ward as well. But also want to note, on the same hand, for young people like renters like myself, it is extremely tough to serve in public office with the current system that we have. So it really does make sense in the city's best interest to create at-large council positions, or else you're not going to have young people like me serve. One, we don't really have the money and we can spare the time to do it. It's, it's very inconvenient, not only for finances, personal life, but work life. But just the fact that you have to live in a location and our system favors people who own houses. So when you live in a house, you're pretty much there. You're in a ward. If you're someone like me, if my landlord decides in September that I can't live here anymore. I have to find another place in Ward Five to live and Ward Five is very small. And if I want to find a good place, it may take me quite a while. So at that point, do I have to resign my seat? So I don't want to go past that fact that as a young person and renters in the city. May face that situation where it's not up to them and they have to give up their seat and I don't really think that's right either. So maybe we can work a better system with at-large counselors. That's kind of getting beyond what we're doing here. So I just kind of want to acknowledge both sides and say that there's no perfect solution here. With everything I'm pushing for, I fully understand it doesn't help getting young people in office. And we just got to find a balance. So those are my, what I'm kind of feeling about everything right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Any new input and any councils who haven't chimed in that would like to, Counselor Pettingill?
Thank you. I, I can't say much that hasn't already been said in support of this. I wholeheartedly support this. I, I think it's a good idea. Lends a little bit of credibility to us as elected officials in the council. And it helps to reestablish that, that faith in us as a elective and deliberative body. I, I agree with Counselor Jensen that, you know, this, this should be a little bit stricter. I don't have anything to, to offer in, in that, in that vein, but I, I do support this.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Jalinas.
Thank you. I can also get behind this. I believe wholeheartedly in the language. Quite frankly, I thought it was implied. So when I read this, like Mayor Kair said, I had no heartburn about it. It just made perfect sense to me. I think if you're representing a ward, you need to be living in it, period. It's not up for debate in my mind. So that's where I stand. I think if you're representing a ward, you need to be living in it, period. It's not up for debate in my mind, so that's where I stand.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Bajor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also agree with the document. And I also agree with Counselor Jensen and Pettenfield as well as Counselor Clement. I don't know how much stricter you could make it. However, some suggestions were made. I think they are viable to look at and see if they would properly fit in there. So I guess that's my take. I am for the document. So we can move it along.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Ray.
Thank you. I have two questions based on how, the way this conversation is going. Is it? So this would be an ordinance, not within the charter. But could the Charter Review Committee possibly take this up? Because I think the more appropriate place for it would be Charter.
We could certainly ask the, the Charter Review Committee to, to take a look at this. I don't know. I guess the more appropriate, the answer to your question, I guess we would probably want legal counsel maybe to chime in a little bit more on that, whether or not it does fit in Turner versus ordinance. You know, the, the review certainly was under it being as an ordinance. What the, what, what the, the city attorney's review at this point.
Okay, thank you for that. And then could the city clerk clarify? When we turn in signatures, do they have to be notarized already, or does the city clerk's office notarize them and waive the fee on that?
Sure. Candidates have either option, Counselor. They can have their signatures notarized by someone else and turn them in already. Having, I'm sorry, let me back up. The circulator's oath is the one that needs to be verified. And that would be notarized. So the person who circulated the papers can either have a notary outside of City Hall notarize that circulator statement for them, or they can bring their papers in and we will verify and notarize the circulator statement. Verification of the actual voter signatures must be done here.
Okay, is there, my question is, is there any fee associated with the notarization on the circulators or on this affidavit if it moves forward?
No, if it's a city-based form, we, we don't charge applicants the notary fee, to my recollection. We only charge the notary fee if it's an outside of the city type of form.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I, I don't disagree with a lot of the sentiment here that folks should live in the ward that they represent. Absolutely. I just think adding this on top of everything else renters and young folks have to put up with is a lot. I am glad to hear that we do waive that fee because it should not cost anyone anything to run for office in the city.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, do you see any issues with this or concern, do you have any concerns?
Um, I really don't. The first half, I think, is, is covered already in the nomination papers. Not to say that it should be eliminated from this form, but I don't think it's going to be really in addition to what is being done. There's a a standard statement on the nomination form, nomination papers under state law that basically says if elected, I, I hereby pledge that I am eligible and agree to serve, sort of a standard boilerplate that's already on there. My only question, when Counselor Ray mentioned the charter, and it's something certainly that Administrator Dotay will run by the, the city attorney, but obviously, as we know, if we put something in the charter, it can't easily be changed. And so that's my only concern is after we have this, assuming that the council adopts it and we've been using it for a year or two, perhaps after a year or two, we discover that there's a particular word or phrase or clause that we want to either remove or add. If it's in the charter, it's really difficult to change, but if it's an ordinance, it's much easier to change, as we know. So typically, we don't put forms like, like this in, in a, in a charter, just because of the, the inability to amend it as easily. So that's my only sort of initial thought, but certainly the advice from the city attorney would be welcome.
All right, thank you. Counselor Khalid.
Thank you. I was gonna ask putting this into the Charter Review Committee, but Kathy already answered and clarified that, so that's very helpful. And I also thought, I am supportive of this. I thought, you know, counselors living or public officials living in their ward was an unspoken rule. It's unfortunate that within the term, people, you know, may move, but it's extremely difficult. You know, I rent, there's other councils who rent or other public officials, so it's just extremely difficult to look for places or try to move. And I think we should just make it much more accessible and equitable for, for public officials. I don't know, and not make it more difficult, but I do support this. And again, I thought it was a given rule. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Counselor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of points and rebuttal. The first topic that came up from Counselor Ray was notification. I don't see anything in here that would say that you couldn't notify the city clerk by email, by a telephone call. I've changed my residence effective such and such a day. I don't consider that to be an onerous burden at all. Counselor Jensen mentioned tightening things up. My original version was a bit tighter, Counselor. The city attorney, for whatever legal reason, decided to loosen it up a little bit. I don't have a problem with either one. My original intent was for all elected officials, including the mayor. I think he may be, by insinuation in here, he may be included in the language, but I haven't really had a chance to, to think about that for a bit. So I have no problem with including it. I think the sentiment is there to include it, all elected officials. Because if the mayor leaves the city, he can move anywhere he wants within the city, he or she, and still be okay if they were to move to Timbuktu or something, then they would have the ten-day limit as well. And I just think that in today's world, if you're representing people, you should have enough integrity to say, yeah, I'm gonna do what is right. As far as the ordinance itself, the charter makes specific reference to the council passing ordinances to control and facilitate elections. And that's what I'm trying to do with this. A charter change, as the clerk notified, that's cast more in stone. We may decide we don't like this. We may decide we want to tighten it up even further. Much easier to do in the form of an ordinance than it is in a charter. And the way the charter is going, my intent is to have this, if it's passed, on the books for this upcoming election. And the idea of a pledge versus taking an oath or a jurat, which, in effect, if you violate that oath, you've committed perjury. I, I don't see the pledges being the same thing. I think this puts more of a burden on the individual to be upfront, be honest and full of integrity. And anybody running for public office should have no problem with that, in my estimation. And I think that covers it all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Counselor Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Looking at it and thinking about it, I guess, how does this make it any more enforceable for a city? I guess I, I get the idea that like having an affidavit makes people kind of swear to it, and if they violate that, then they're maybe eligible to be like prosecuted for perjury. Jump, I'm totally okay with. I totally support that. Can't lie under oath. But, I mean, should we think about anything else? Like, can we do a fine at the city level, like a five hundred dollar fine if someone is untruthful about living where they say they live, like as a domicile? Because, I mean, we can do this, but at the end of the day, it's not gonna change anything unless someone gets caught. And so like someone dishonest could just, you know, not tell anyone, be very sneaky about it and not get caught. So I, to me, this doesn't seem like it increases any way of enforcing it. And so and so, I mean, like, what, what would be the penalty? I mean, public embarrassment. Some people just seem to not really care about that. But like, to me, I feel like, you know, being charged with perjury is good. Getting a fine from the city makes sense to me, so I don't know. I just, I worry that some people are, are not gonna really take it seriously and are just gonna do what they want if we don't have any enforcement mechanism. Does that make sense?
Does any Counselor Clement, go ahead.
Hey, in answer to Counselor Jensen's question, I'm not a lawyer. I don't play one on TV, however. The pains and penalties of perjury under state criminal code carries within a ten-year prison sentence and a ten thousand dollar fine. Which would be, I, I would think would be enough. Now, as to enforcement, this is probably no more enforceable than the language we have now on our nomination form. And there is no teeth to that, other than, okay, we, we hear that you're living out in Woodup Pitloch somewhere. And we look into the matter and find out, ah, indeed, he is living out in Woodup Pitloch and zooming into our meetings, whatever. All we can do is toss you out of office. Okay, this at least allows a criminal case to be developed. A case that the police, the police can't enforce our nomination. That's all civil process. But this would make it a criminal act to, to violate that oath. And it's a pretty stiff penalty. I mean, ten, ten thousand dollars, ten years. I would certainly take notice. I mean, I think a lot of people would be more apt to say, ah, it's only a pledge. You know, I pledge. Okay, no big deal. But if they realize that what they're doing is potentially a felony, might make them sit up and take notice. Some people, no, it wouldn't bother them at all. I mean, there's, there's evidence of that in the political world every day. We have people out there that just don't take to heart the requirements of public office, and they do as they darn well please from time to time. So I think this is a step in the right direction. It would, you would be able to invoke police enforcement of this. If you had a situation, you'd say to the police, look, we think we have a violation here. The police may turn it over to like the county sheriff or something because they might deem it a conflict of interest. They might have the Auburn Police Invest, you know, something along that line, but still, it is a criminal act and it could be enforced in that fashion. That's my estimation on it, all based on my forty-five years. I just think that we owe it to the folks that we represent to be honest and upfront with them and give some semblance of proof that we are indeed taking this seriously. It's a lark or a political game. Thank you.
Thank you. So it looks like overall there's support for, for moving this forward.
I thank you, colleagues, for that. I thank you.
All right, thank you. And with that said, we'll switch over to our seven P M regular meeting. And we did quite well to stay on time, folks. I appreciate that. So welcome, folks, to our June first, twenty twenty-one City Council Business Meeting. This session will be conducted remotely and council members only participate electronically. For those of you in online, please ensure that you joined our meeting using the following web address, If you join to use any other link, we ask that you log off and re-sign into the meeting using that web, that website. Public comment on any item appearing on the agenda may be sent to publiccomment@louisstonmaine.gov prior to or during this meeting, and all comments received will be forwarded to the City Council. And members of the public who wish to make a comment are invited to do so by raising their hand. Once you are acknowledged, we just ask that you unmute your mic. And with that said, we'll move to an update on cities' actions regarding the COVID nineteen pandemic.
Nothing to update this evening, Mayor. No updates.
Okay, thank you. And Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll for attendance, please.
Sure. Counselor from Ward One.
Here.
Ward Two.
Here.
Ward Three.
Present.
Ward Four. We, Counselor Joy may be fading in and out with some internet issues, so we'll circle back around. Counselor from Ward Five.
Present.
Ward Six.
Present.
Ward Seven.
Present.
I believe Counselor Joy is just logging in again.
I'm right here.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor. In addition, Mr. Mayor, also present this evening is Dennis Dotay, City Administrator, Heather Hunter, Finance Director, and myself as the City Clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. And roll call votes begin with?
The Counselor of Ward Five.
All right, thank you. With that done, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of May fourth, May eleventh, and May eighteenth.
Don't move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay, moved by Counselor Clement, seconded by Counselor Jelineus. All in, or call the roll, please.
For Counselor from Ward Five.
Yes.
Ward Six.
Yes.
Ward Seven.
Yes.
Ward One.
Yes.
Ward Two.
Yes.
Ward Three. Counselor Ray, you're muted. Okay, and Ward Four.
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor. And Counselor Ray. Motion passed by vote of six to zero.
Okay, thank you. Public comment period. Any member of the public may make comments regarding issues pertaining to Lewiston City Government that are not on this agenda. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to make a comment to the City Council? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda. Are there any concerns about the two items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for passage, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Okay, moved by Counselor Clement, seconded by Counselor Joy. Call the roll, please.
Sure. And if I could just note for the clarification for folks in the audience, the consent agenda consists of two items this evening. Item number one, appointments to the Voter Registration Appeals Board. And item number two, appointment of the school committee nominee to the Public Health Committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor from Ward Five.
Yes.
Ward Six.
Yes.
Ward Seven.
Yes.
Ward One.
Yes.
Ward Two.
Yes.
Ward Three.
Yes.
And Ward Four.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number three, please.
Item number three, public hearing on applications for a new liquor license and special amusement permit for Live Entertainment for Just-in-Time Recreation LLC, twenty-four Molleson Way. Requested action to authorize the city clerk's office to approve a new liquor license application and special amusement permit for Just-in-Time Recreation LLC, twenty-four Molleson Way.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I'll open the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Don't move.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, moved by Counselor Jensen, seconded by Counselor Clement. Any questions or comments from the council? I saw nothing. Counselor Clement.
Just a quick question, Mr. Mayor. This is the bowling alley and the old fairgrounds that we're talking about. New ownership, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, no issues, Madam Clerk, that council needs to be made aware of.
No, nothing at this time. Thank you. It's a new business.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any quest, any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, I'll turn it to the public. Any questions or comments for the public in reference to this liquor license and special amusement permit? Okay, seeing none, back to the council. With that, I'll close the public hearing and call the roll, please.
Counselor from Ward Five.
Yes.
Ward Six.
Yes.
Ward Seven.
Yes.
Ward One.
Yes.
Ward Two.
Yes.
Ward Three.
Yes.
And Ward Four.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number four, please.
Item number four, a public hearing on the renewal application for a special amusement permit for Live Entertainment for the Ramada Hotel and Conference Center, four ninety Pleasant Street. Requested action to grant a special amusement permit for Live Entertainment to the Ramada Hotel and Conference Center, four ninety Pleasant Street.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Counselor Jelineus, seconded by Counselor Joy. With that, I'll open the public hearing. Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none to the public. Seeing none back to the council. I'll close the public hearing and call the roll, please.
Counselor from Ward Four. I'm sorry, Ward Five, I apologize. Counselor from Ward Five.
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor. Ward Six.
I'm staying.
Ward Seven.
Yes.
Ward One.
Yes.
Ward Two.
Yes.
Ward Three.
Yes.
And Ward Four.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of six to zero.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number five, please.
Item number five, public hearing for approval of live music at Samar Payne Memorial Park in conjunction with the Bates Dance Festival. Requested action to conduct a public hearing on an application from the Bates Dance Festival for live performances to be held at Samar Payne Memorial Park on July nineteenth and twenty-sixth and to authorize a permit for an outdoor entertainment event as required by the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter On July nineteenth and twenty sixth and to authorize a permit for an outdoor entertainment event as required by the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter ten. Article one, section ten dash three to the event organizers for the outdoor event contingent upon positive recommendations. From the Police Department, Fire Department, Code Land Use Officer and Code Health Officer regarding compliance with all regulations and compliance with all city ordinances.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by councillor Ray, seconded by uh councillor Jensen, and with that, I'll open the uh public hearing. Any questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none to the public. And back to the council. So I get excited whenever we see Samar Payne uh park used for either music or dance. Uh, we have a beautiful amphitheater down there uh that I encourage anyone in the public who feels that uh they might need. Uh, a space like that to reach out to the city. Cause I believe we reduced uh any fees, is that correct, to that area? Yeah, I got a thumbs up. Okay, good. Uh, so anyway, that's a great opportunity for folks. Okay, uh, back to the council. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Call the roll, please.
Councillor from Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven?
Yes.
Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
And Ward four? Councillor from Ward four?
Looks like he's frozen.
Screen might be frozen. Okay, motion passed by vote of six to zero.
Alright, thank you. Agenda item number six.
Item number six, order approving the establishment of Picker House Lofts Tax Increment Financing District and Program. Requested action to approve the establishment of the Picker House Lofts Tax Increment Financing District and Development Program.
So moved.
Moved by councillor Ray. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. And then I would assume during our presentation, are we going to cover agenda items six and seven kind of at the same time, or do they have to be totally separate in presentation?
Yeah, no, I I will cover both and really this is a public hearing as well, even though it was listed as an order specifically as you read through the items. Uh, it did, it is noted that it's a public hearing. They had the ten day public notice back on May twenty first. And so I've got Nathan Zanton and Amy Cullen should be uh coming on as well.
Yeah, if you, if you could link, just let me uh open the public hearing as well at this time then and then take it away, please. Link.
We're now open, okay. So the public hearing is open. Yeah, no, this is a project that's uh been in play for about a year. Uh, the Continental Mill is a five hundred and sixty thousand square foot mill right on the river. Chinburg bought it a little over a year ago. Uh, Nathan Zanton had approached him. He's uh had his eye on doing a uh mixed income housing project in the Continental Mill. But uh five hundred and sixty thousand square feet is too large, uh, a project for uh for Nathan to take on. But Amy Cullen and Nathan Zanton are with us tonight. They can really give you a sense of what they intend to do there. And with that, I'd ask that uh Nathan and Amy be brought in as panelists.
They're here with us.
You're here.
Yeah, go ahead, Nathan.
Thank you. Good evening councillors. Um, I'm Nathan Zanton, President of the Zanton Company. We're a small but active real estate development company based in Portland. Um, and we specialize in doing high quality professionally managed mixed income rental housing. Uh, we've done two projects in Lewiston to date, one called the Lofts at Bates Mill in Mill number two in the Lofts, in the Bates Mill complex. And then uh the Hartley Block on Lisbon Street uh across from Forage Market that opened about two years ago. We would love to help be part of of bringing alive the Continental Mill. It's such an exciting property. Cause it's, it's in such close proximity to downtown. It's on the Riverfront Island, which has so much potential. But as Link mentioned, we. It was, it's too big, it was too big a bite for us. We actually have tried for some years to purchase just a part of it. And the sellers who ultimately sold it to Eric Chinburg and his company were not interested in selling part of it. They wanted to sell the entire thing. But when Chinburg purchased it, um, we, we, we want it, we tried, we tried uh talking with him and he was interested in in selling part of it. So that, that's kind of the genesis of of where we are today. With me is Amy Cullen, Vice President of the Zanton Company. Um, and she, if if this project is able to get off the ground, she will serve as project manager for the project. Um, and I'll serve as project executive. And we've, we have, we have about, I want to say twelve or fifteen slides to show you tonight um and to show the public. Um, I'm going to narrate the first five or six or so, and then I'm going to turn it over to Amy to narrate the remainder. The first five or six are really primarily giving a little bit of of background about us as a company, and we'll, I'll do it fairly quickly. Next slide, please. So we're, uh, we've developed eleven apartment complexes uh in the last fifteen years or so totaling five hundred and sixty units. I mentioned the two that we have in in Lewiston, which are shown there um with their dates of completion. We manage all of our projects ourself with our own in-house property management company called Saco Falls Management. We're very proud of Saco Falls Management. We put a lot of effort into it and we really. Um, try to make the resident experience kind of the center of Saco Falls Management. We really focus on being responsive to our tenants and also responsive to other stakeholders such as cities, neighbors. City councils and and city staff. Next slide, please. These are some images um from projects that we've done in the past. The Lofts at Bates Mill, which I mentioned, in the top left was the way that looked. Um, when we first encountered it, um, we. Put all new windows in into it as part of our rehab, repointed bricks, took down the two. Uh, dust chutes which which flanked the original tower and kind of brought that original tower back to its, its beautiful original condition. Um, and then you can see some, some interior shots, one, one of of it before we rehabbed it and and one typical hallway scene there in the bottom right. Next slide, please. Um, this is one we did in Biddeford, um, the mill at Saco Falls. So the slide in the far left is the original condition of the building. The tower is, as you can maybe make out there, was really falling apart. In fact, bricks were falling from it, actively falling from it when we first um visited the building. Um, and then the one on the right is what it looks like today um with some uh a before and after picture uh inset there. Next slide. Um, so this one also was in Biddeford, right next door to um the mill at Saco Falls. Um, and um you can see there the, the, the before and after pictures are taken from exactly the same vantage point. Um, so. Um, and this is the kind of of just complete. Overhaul from being a derelict building to being a real asset to the community that we would love to 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 perform for the, for the section of the Continental Mill. Which we would call Picker House Lofts. And the reason we would call it that is that that was the section of the mill, which was the Picker House. Um, where they would pick out uh imperfections in the cotton before they ran them through the, through the machines. Um, and then down in the, in the bottom left and the bottom right are just before and after pictures of some of the interiors of that mill. The bottom right is actually a, a community room today for, for residents. At the last, it's at Saco Falls. Next slide, please. Um, this is a. It kind of a, a simple drawing done by the Chinburg folks of kind of their, their vision for, for how this site is going to be transformed. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Amy to narrate this slide and the success succeeding slides.
Thanks, Nathan. Um, good evening. Thank you so much for having us tonight. Um, like Nathan said, this is, this is kind of a sketch of the Chinburg master plan. Our portion of this plan here is this building. Here, we are, you know, about six months in the plant, six months ahead of Chinburg properties in the planning process. Um, we're kind of the, the engine pulling the train. Kind of our development will kick off um redevelopment of the entire mill. Just the mill um complex. So we're excited to to be in. You know, in Lewiston again. So, you know, our project is here, shows this is where our parking will be. Um, our handicap parking and then shared parking around the outside. The Chinburg folks have agreed to make this courtyard a green space, an interior courtyard for not only our residents, but their residents. They're planning on doing some market rate housing. And some commercial. Um, so we expect that will be really beautiful. There's, you know, kind of the, the official site plan, the non cartoonish one. This is what we submitted to um the planning department in May. Um, kind of shows that interior building, it's a blow up of that building, the Picker House. Five stories, seventy two units. This shows our handicap parking here. Um, and kind of directional traffic um calming area. If you, if you're down in that area today, it's kind of the Wild West. Anybody can drive anywhere down there, kind of a sea is, a sea of asphalt. And this kind of shows going in here, this is the building we're talking about. This is um Cedar, Cedar Street. So we're turning in. Kind of this building in the, in the foreground is the building we're talking about. Um, and this is kind of a rendering of up close how that entry will look with the handicap accessible entrance. Um, so just a quick overview, it'll be a complete historic renovation using the National Park Service standards. Um, it'll be, it's a family project, including one, two and three bedroom units, just like our Hartley Block project and the Lofts at Bates Mill. Um, seventy two units total. Twenty six market rate units and forty six um rent restricted units. And by rent restricted, we mean um set aside for people at fifty to sixty percent of the area median. And what does that mean? So here's kind of a slide that shows um fifty percent of the, of the median income is households that earn up to about thirty five thousand. Um, sixty percent of the area median is about forty two thousand for a household of four. So, and then that shows the comparable rates of um rents there. So market rate one bedroom about nine seventy five. Um, but if you make between thirty six thousand and forty two thousand, your rent will be five, seven sixty two. So it just gives you an idea there. And rent includes heat, hot water, um wifi, fitness room, community room. Uh, we offer indoor bike storage. Resident service coordinator on site and parking. So, um, we're here tonight to talk about um city financing in, in terms of a a TIF. I think we've, we've shared our financials with you and we've shown there's a financial need, especially now with construction pricing continuing to rise. Um, we have a gap of about a million dollars to create this housing. Um, given the TIF, we could take on additional debt. To fill that gap. In addition, the TIF provide, would provide two additional points on the main housing application. Um, every year, the main housing holds an application process, which is highly competitive. Usually somewhere between fifteen to eighteen projects apply. And somewhere between five and six are funded. Um, so points really drive. Really drive which projects can be, can be funded. Um, and I think in the documents that are proposed, um, we know the city has allocated its home funds. For the next several years to the Choice Neighborhoods project. Um, and congratulations on getting that funding. That was really exciting to hear. But if additional home funds do come in, we do agree to amend, you know, any documents. To kind of switch out home funds versus TIF. And it would be point neutral for main housing. And, you know, as long as our gap is filled, we're, we're happy to. We're happy to do that. So here's our, the kind of the numbers, the proposed of the proposed TIF. The current valuation of just that building is about eighty nine thousand dollars. So that drives about twenty five hundred dollars a year in taxes. Um, when we're done, when, when the building's running, the estimated value is going to be over four million dollars. So the total taxes are scheduled to be about a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Um, so the way, I'm sure you know, the way TIPS work, um, the TIF, the credit enhancement agreement only applies to the new taxes. So the new taxes are a hundred and fifteen thousand. And we're asking for seventy five percent to go to the project um in the first ten years. And then from year, years eleven to twenty, declining three percent per year. And that, which brings us to forty five percent at year twenty, and then. You know, no enhancement after that. So that, you know, the, the numbers there, the math is shown. Um, that would mean in the first ten years, eighty six thousand per year. Back to the project to support um its operation and debt service and thirty one thousand to the city.
And I just want to emphasize that. The, the whole purpose of, of requesting a TIF is to give us the funds to take out that additional mortgage that fills that gap. We're not going to spend it on anything other than paying, paying that additional mortgage. So, um, sometimes, you know, I think members of the public think that. Uh, when a developer gets a TIF, it just goes into the developer's pocket, but nothing could be further from the truth, at least in our projects. Um, it all goes into. Create, filling that gap between the cost of, of building the project and the, the sources that we have available to, to build it.
So what does a TIF accomplish? Well, it catalyzes the, the redevelopment of the entire Continental Mill property. Um, bringing an additional hundred and fifty units of market rate housing. That's the Chinburg um plan. Market rate apartments, office space and retail in addition to our project. Um, it increases the tax revenue by over three thousand percent, um, adding twenty eight thousand, seven fifty annually to the city. For the first ten years and then an additional three, three thousand five hundred every year until um. Year twenty one and then the full one seventeen. Um, a TIP district prevents the tax shift. Which means it prevents any increased assessed value from triggering increases in city or in county taxes. And it also prevents decreases in state aid to education and revenue sharing. Um, it brings seventy two households, new households downtown, um, each one shopping in the shops and eating in the restaurants. And it provides two critical points on our application, making, could, you know, make the difference between success and failure on that application. And here we've just shown our timeline. Um, of course, we're working now on city approvals. Um, you know, talking with, with the city council here about possible TIF. And also working with the planning department and going through the planning board process. In August is our tax credit application to main housing. If we're lucky enough to be funded, we'll do our full design work and um kind of lock in in our equity, equity partners. Between October and spring of next year with the hope to start construction next summer. Um, opening for residency kind of summer or fall of twenty twenty three. So that's, that's our timeline there. And we'll open it up to questions.
Alright, if we can drop the shared screen, thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? I will just, I'll add that this. It wasn't workshop, you're correct, previously. Was it actually workshops?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so I'll just add that we workshop this previously. Okay, seeing no questions or comments from the council at this time, this is a public hearing, so I'll turn it over to the public. Okay, seeing none, back to the council. Councillor Ray?
I just wanted to express my enthusiasm for this project. Um, you know, being the councillor of Ward three, you've added a hundred and eleven households. To my ward through the Lofts at Bates Mill and Hartley Block, and I hear nothing but great things about those experiences. From tenants who live there and constituents of mine. So I, I, I'm excited for you to expand into a different ward and and give another person a chance to have residence there. Um, I think the mixed income feature of this is, is so important to our community where we need all kinds of affordable to everyone housing. Um, and so I think that's, that's a great topic for it and exciting to see what you do. And so I think that's, that's a great topic for it and exciting to see what you do.
Hey, thank you, Counselor Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be voting against this as well as the next agenda item. I, I don't want that to take away from the work of the Zantin Company or, you know, the good, the good word, they've done a lot of good at Lewiston, and so I don't want this to be, my vote's not because of them. I can just say now, if, if the TIF was for only market rate housing in that area, I'd be supportive of it. Plain and simple, I've reached that conclusion, I'd be supportive of it, but I just can't support any. TIPS for non-market raised housing in the Riverfront Island. To me, it just fits in line with our goals and our, my vision for the city a little bit better. You know, if we want to have niche restaurants and businesses, they need people that make money to, to go there. Or else people that don't make money are going to go to Auburn and spend their money at the box chains in Auburn. So if, if we, if we fill up a lot of the riverfront with people who can't afford to go to the niche restaurants and businesses that we claim that we want to, you know, promote in our goals. We're not really doing the city any service, we're not really growing the community, not the kind of economic development that I, that, that makes sense to me. We talked about place making in the community, if you're a young professional like myself, you don't live in Lewiston. Where do you move to in Lewiston? There's no single distinct neighborhood where people kind of like flock to. If you're, you know, making good money and you're living in the Portland area, want to live downtown Lewiston, you want a place to go to? What street or neighborhood would you go to? There may be a few locations like, you know, facilities, structures, businesses, um. Places to live that you may go to, but there's no like single area neighborhood. And I really see an opportunity with the Riverfront Island is building that up. End of the day, we're going to have some neighborhoods that are a little bit more wealthy than others, and that's just the way it is, most cities do. So I, I think we have an opportunity with the riverfront and really growing that, and if we limit ourselves to two-thirds of the housing there as not market rate, I think we're really kneecapping ourselves as a city. So I'm, I'm very supportive of the Zantin Company and everything they've done for, for the city of Lewiston. But as far as the future of Lewiston goes, I do not, this seat, I, I just don't see this fitting in well with the city's vision. And I think that we'll look back in it as maybe not being in our best interest, I could be wrong, I hope I am.
Okay, thank you, any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, and just, just for clarification from either Link or, or Clark. So Agenda Item Six requires a public hearing, does Agenda Item Number Seven require a public hearing as well?
I will defer to Lincoln on that.
Yeah, really, the, creating the TIP District and Program is what requires the public hearing. Number seven is really the legal document associated with it, so it's sort of, they're, they're intermeshed, I mean. And I've got a very brief presentation, Amy covered a lot of the ground I intended to. We've got a couple of boxes we should check off, Heidi did a great job putting together performas and did the analysis on the tax shifts. So we've got, you know, a couple of slides that I, I'd like to touch upon, just to give the, the public a little better sense, I mean, Amy and Nathan did a nice job. As well, this is sort of checking off the boxes to make sure we're meeting the standards for main housing.
All right, thank you, all right, so Counselor Fleming.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Jensen has raised some excellent points. Points which I find that I'm grappling with as to which way to go with this. I, I do believe that this section of the city is prime real estate. I do not believe economic development consists entirely of low income or workforce housing. And for that reason, I'm not sure how I'm going to vote on this yet. But he does raise some excellent points, and I think people should consider that. I mean, the, the overwhelming majority here of. The housing units are going to be for workforce housing. And I just don't know that that's the best thing to put in this location. I don't disagree with his sentiment that the Zantin Company has done a lot for the city. I'm just not sure how much this would be doing for the city in this location, thank you.
All right, thank you, I, you know, I, Counselor Jensen, so Counselor Jensen brings up concerns that I brought up years and years ago as a newer counselor. But I will, but I just want to add this to the mix. We have other opportunities for market rate housing in that area. In fact, the rest of the mill hopefully will be market rate housing, and, and again, I don't think there's anything in stone on that. So that that percentage of workforce housing and, and, and they didn't call it workforce housing, but truly don't people who make forty thousand dollars a year deserve a good place to live? And be part of a community, they can spend money at niche restaurants at that, you know, when they're making that kind of money, they do drive economic development. The, the days of just plain subsidy, I mean, this isn't just that, you know, the subsidized housing, it's truly people who work hard every day. But because of living wages not being where they should be, they're in workforce, you know, they're in a position that need workforce housing, so. Again, I think Counselor Jensen brought up good points, but somebody making forty thousand dollars a year has a right to live in a, a place out. A place where they choose, I'll, I'll leave it at that, I won't be critical of any specific area, but that's, again, that's my opinion. Nathan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add to what you just said. It throws something else into the mix, which is that when someone earning forty thousand dollars a year is able to live in housing that costs about three hundred dollars per month less. Than what they would otherwise have to pay on the open market, that gives them three hundred dollars more every month to put into the local economy. They, they, it allows them to participate in the local economy to a greater extent than they would be able to otherwise, so I just wanted to mention that.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Jensen.
Yeah, um, I would just respectfully disagree with like the comment about forty K and having like a right to choose where you live. I mean, I'm a teacher, I make less than forty K a year. But I, I fully recognize that if that area were just filled with teachers, it wouldn't grow the economy downtown that we want it to. So I hate to say it, but you need people that make more money than I do living in that area. Or else we're just not going to grow those niche places as much as we should.
Hey, well, like, so good point, I just hope we're not forcing teachers. To, to be limited on where they could live, and I think Nathan, Nathan brought up a very good point that that. You know, one way or the other, I think it's an economic driver, but the day our community is saying no to teachers or nurses, you know, it's just. I don't know, I just, I, I think workforce housing needs to be as important as market rate housing. Within the limits of our city, of course, Counselor Jolinas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure who this question is for, but, you know, certainly very interested in that area. And wondering how these mills have been vacant for so long, and we talk about, you know, this space being used for other purposes, but. Maybe this is a question for the city administrator, have others approached the city looking or wanting? This space for, for another purpose?
I am not aware of any, you know, anyone else approaching for this purpose or what's being proposed right now at this point.
Okay, I'm just curious, I know it's been years, and so as we're talking about this, I'm thinking, well, I just didn't know people were lined up waiting for.
Yep, and, and if, if I go way in on that, I mean, it was, the Roy family had owned it from the mid-sixties. And they really were not developers, they were caretakers of the property, had it great as a light manufacturing use, but as those uses started leaving, they were looking to sell it. Over the last twenty years, I probably worked with four or five developers who've had an interest, but all of them were looking to do some sort of. Mix of market rate or workforce housing, I mean, it was, it was almost always a mix, it was always going to take a TIF and other support, historic preservation tax credits. We're going to be part of the financing mix as it is with this project, and I candidly, I fully expect the properties. When the time comes, we'll be knocking at the door saying, you know, again, here's our gap, can you help us meet it? And we'll have to wrestle with that at the time, but, so I think this is sort of a precursor of things to come, and it really is the spark. Started, but it's, for twenty years, I've had multiple conversations and this, it's, it's finally real.
Okay, thank you for that, that's helpful information to know.
Thank you, Counselor Ray.
Um, I just wanted to weigh in, I, I think Counselor Jensen has been clear about his feelings on tips in the past, so I, I don't. Proport to believe that this will sway you, but I do think it takes. A couple of projects to really get the ball rolling, and I think that area in particular could use this project as a point to tip the scales in our favor and get that. Development going and work towards those market rate apartments. I think too, we don't want to price out the folks who are already here, as we do use the Choice Neighborhoods strategy and get more people into homeownership. I think, you know, it might not be economic development immediately for those people to take three hundred dollars a month that they're, that they would have spent on rent. But they might be able to save up for homeownership too, which I think is something that we've talked a lot about. We're a fifty percent rented city right now, and so. As we look at those numbers changing over time and moving folks out of poverty and into real estate opportunities, which are. A huge wealth escalator for folks. I, I think that is part of the strategy as well to find these savings in housing when people really need it, and as they move through their careers and. Exciting news that the state will be funding educators at forty K going forward. It, it will be, it takes time to develop these things, and all of those things in partnership and the homestead exemption and all of that will get us to a different. Balance of homeownership and renting in the future, and I think this is just a part of getting that ball rolling.
Thank you, Counselor LaJoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think it's a great idea in a sense. And I say that because of the riverfront development process that we started a number of years ago. As you know, Cedar Street is the heel of, of the project, starting from Main Street. Developing that particular area hopefully would entice. The city possibly and or other developers. To move in or invest in the area. To possibly excel the riverfront development. Process where we have walking trails that we talked about. We could also use the canal, you know, some of the thoughts that were there were. Like a paddle boat or, you know, canoeing or some type of water activity. We also have Sabad Payne Park there. With a lot of activities, especially the balloon festival in the summertime and other activities, we have the LA Museum. That during, this economy, of course, is not going to grow as much as they wanted to. But they have high expectations there as well, and we also have the Franco Center. That has a beautiful facilities with regards to a lot of activities. And we also have a number of restaurants along Lincoln Street. So I, you know, I, I think if we, like we're looking at, starting at the heel, will give us an advantage, I believe. To get the system moving, and I, I guess that's where I'm at with the situation, thank you.
Okay, thank you, any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none, call the roll, please.
Counselor from Ward Five?
No.
Ward Six?
I'm going to vote a very tepid yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
And Ward Four?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes by a vote of six to one.
Okay, thank you, Agenda Item Number Seven, please.
Item number seven, order approving the agreement for development assistance and tax increment financing with Pickerhouse Lofts LP. Requested action to approve the agreement for development assistance and tax increment financing with Pickerhouse Lofts LP.
So moved.
Second for purposes.
Second.
Okay, moved by Counselor Ray, seconded by Counselor Clement, and with that, I'll turn it over to staff.
Yeah, at, at this point, let me pull up the screens, I was going to use to say these two items are so dovetailed, we really debated whether they should be one item or two, because. One is creating the TIP District and Program, this part we're now on is, is actually the legal document that makes effect. We decided to start with the TIP District and Program, because there was no point in approving the document if the council was not supportive of it, so let me pull up. My share screen, see if I have better luck this time than I have had historically. There we go. This, a very familiar image that, can, can you all see that, it's hard for me to tell.
We can.
You can, okay, so very similar image to what Amy had up, it's really this mill in the middle, middle of the building, it's sort of the, it's about seventy-nine thousand square feet. This is where it's located in the city, this is the, this is part of the main housing requirements, this is part of the joint development agreement that we're asking to, to approve. This gives you a, a close-up of where it is. Downtown, you can see it's just a portion of the Continental Mill complex. This is the. Financials on it, and it's a twenty-three-year TIP district. The first three years is really as they're going through the process and building it, so no revenues would flow back. To Zantin during that time, but the city would maintain that twenty-five hundred and forty-six dollars a year, which is what the current assessment generates. In the fourth year is when that would be completed, April one of twenty twenty-four, if you saw Amy's. Timeline, they, they expected to start having guests stay there in, in the fall of twenty twenty-three, if all goes according to plan. So we'd be at full value the following year, and that's when it would start running, and so for the first ten years, it'd be seventy-five percent going back to the project. And then for, for debt service, and then it starts decreasing three percent annually for each of the next ten years. Just holding the mill rates and the assessed valuation flat, it's one point five three, five million. Would be flowing back to Zantin, and then the city itself would be netting a little over eight hundred and seventy thousand during that timeframe. This was the tax shift that Amy touched upon lightly as well, again, it starts in year four. And this is, allows you to pay less in county taxes than you otherwise would pay. And you continue to receive the same amount of, excuse me, I shouldn't say the same amount, but. When you first develop a project, the assessed valuation diminishes what you receive from the state, and you're paying more to the county. This actually, for that assessed valuation, we can shelter the net benefit to the city down at the bottom there is five hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred dollars. And really, the, the joint development agreement is all the legal, you know, who's required to do what. It touches upon Zantin building the seventy-two units, the fifty to sixty percent. It provides the mechanism that was touched upon, if we're able to free up, whether it's home dollars or other federal dollars with CARES Act dollars flowing. That might be something we can put towards this project, if we put three hundred thousand dollars of federal dollars in. The joint development agreement specifically says we'll amend the TIF, reduce the TIF term to. Fifteen years and at fifty percent instead of twenty years, starting at seventy-five in dimension. And with that. I'm up for questions.
Can you drop the screen, thank you, any questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none to the, oh, Counselor Fleming.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just one quick comment, as we move from one item to the next year. I would hope that in the future, we remember the conversation we had here tonight regarding getting something rolling in this area. And then take to heart some of the comments that have come forth, particularly from Counselor Jensen, and not just. Give this area away down there, let's, let's put it to good use, let's get the, the development going. And that's why I, I agreed to. Establish the TIF in the first place, with the hopes that we can remember in the future. Take a close look at this, see how it develops, and not go willy-nilly into the. Into the future without. Due regard for the sentiments that were expressed here tonight, thank you.
Okay, thank you, any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none to the public. And back to the council.
Mr. Mayor, I believe Nathan had a comment he wanted to make.
Go ahead, Nathan.
We're going to go to the public, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to emphasize, just in, in case it may not have been. Because Lincoln's presentation only touched lightly on it, that after the twenty years. All of the tax revenue would go a hundred percent to the city and for, and forever after that. So if the city decides to invest in this project, it will be. Giving up some tax revenue in the, in the short term, but in the long term, it will be getting much, much more tax revenue than it gets. Now from that property. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Counselor from word five?
No.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
And word four?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes by a vote of six to one.
Alright, thank you, Nathan and Amy. We appreciate you attending the meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Okay, agenda item number eight, please.
Item number eight, public hearing and adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty two Lewiston Capital Improvement Program Bond Issue Order. Requested action to adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty two Lewiston Capital Improvement Program Bond Issue Order. Authorizing the issuance of seventeen million eight hundred sixty three thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty two. Public improvement bonds and making an appropriation for certain capital projects.
So moved.
Second for discussion.
And moved by Councilor Ray, seconded by Councilor Clement. And I would assume, is this being turned over to Heather? Okay. Finance Director Hunter.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, City Council. These are projects that we've kind of been talking about. Since the LCIP was presented back in January, it continued to be part of the discussions all through the budget workshop. And some items or some projects have been moved from the original list. Through other funding sources, whether it be through fund balance items. Are looking at other items or projects that were previously funded that we were able to. Transfer funds in order to complete that project. As you will note, it still leaves five million nine hundred and forty three thousand dollars for the city side and four hundred. Excuse me, five million four ninety five for the school side. So the amount that applies to the eighty cent bond limit or eighty percent bond limit is eleven million. Four eighty three, three forty one. That is an amount that exceeds the debt limit of seven million four oh five, six eighty one. So it will require a super majority vote if there are no adjustments to the project listing. Right now, it's a little over four million dollars over the limit.
Any questions or comments from the council? Okay, with, so I I do need to open up the public here. Is there anyone? In the public that wishes to comment? Okay, seeing none, back to the council. Call the roll.
Counselor from word five?
No.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
And word four?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed by vote of six to one.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number nine, please.
Item number nine, order authorizing the use of surplus funds by the Public Works Municipal Garage. To purchase one three quarter ton four by four pickup truck. Requested action to approve the order authorizing the use of surplus funds. By the Public Works Municipal Garage to purchase one three quarter ton pickup truck.
So moved. Second.
Okay, moved by Councilor Jelineas, I believe, seconded by Councilor Ray. With that, I'll turn it over to our Director of Public Works.
Thank you, everyone. I am here to just kind of look at what we have for immediate needs and it's kind of the tail end of one year, the beginning end of another year. But we did have some substantial savings in each one of the categories of the vehicles that were accounted for in our Capital Vehicle Improvement Program. And one of the vehicles for the Parks Department just couldn't wait. It had enough damages that it wasn't worth repairing, so we have put a lockout tag on it not to be used. It's a vehicle that's used for the smaller alleyways in the winter and by the parks crews in the summer. And as all of you know, we're we're running around all over the place mowing and doing all the cemeteries and those kind of pieces, so. We're asking for your permission to use some of our surplus funds from fiscal year twenty one to purchase this pickup truck. That's not to exceed forty thousand.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none to the public. Back to the council. Call the roll.
Counselor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
And word four?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor. Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number ten.
Reports and updates.
Councilor Ray.
Thank you. You would think in a week where Monday was a holiday, we wouldn't have school committee, but we snuck one in before this meeting. And addressed some personnel. So I just wanted to let you all know that our new principal at McMahon Elementary School is Charlotte Nile. She is an internal promotion. Very exciting to have her. We also have a new Lewiston Middle School Principal. Ty Thurlo, an external hire, but coming to us with great experience. As well as a new executive assistant to the superintendent. We say goodbye to Sue Turgeon as she retires at the end of the year and we've got. A great new person who's experienced as an executive assistant to a superintendent just across the river. So I think that is a good steal.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Jelineas.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to do a brief report out from the Lewiston Area Public Health Committee. We at our main meeting put together a letter to the mayor and the city administrator talking about our interest in sponsoring. Lewiston's first ever rally for recovery. This is really an event, we tentatively are looking at September eighteenth at Kennedy Park. But it's an event where we will try to pull together. Area agencies that are supporting folks who are struggling with substance use disorder, really looking at education. Really looking at having tables available with information, speakers. You know, this kind of an event has been held in other communities like Augusta and in Bangor and in Portland. And Lewiston has not done one before and we're pretty excited about it because we look at this not only as an opportunity to educate the community. And to provide resources and support, but also to take a lot of our area agencies that are out there and existing almost in silo form, if you will. To work collaboratively and more collectively for a cause that is really important for this community. So we have formed a sort of coalition, if you will, and we've had one meeting to date. And I just really wanted to share the news with City Council because I think it's in the public, because I think it's pretty exciting news to share.
All right, thank you, Councilor Jelineas. Councilor Clement.
I don't think my report is anyone near as exciting as the last two, however. A week ago, last night, your finance committee met. We did adopt new rules. Taking into consideration the fact that the legislature is considering allowing public bodies to meet virtually. We mirrored the sentiment that has been put forth to the legislature. I think the big item is effective next Monday night, we will be meeting in person as a group for the first time and. It seems like eons, but it's only been a little over a year, I guess. Now, we'll be meeting at the Public Works Facility on Adams Street. For the foreseeable future. They have a larger conference room there. This was to allay some fears. From the committee. They wanted to get a little more distance than we had in our conference room at City Hall. And we do a tremendous amount of business approval of contracts and that sort of thing with. The Public Works Department, so it makes it better for their folks to be able to present from their home ground, as it were. So that's it from your finance committee. We're moving ahead and I think we're seeing light at the end of the tunnel, finally, let's hope.
Okay, thank you. Any other reports or updates? Seeing none, agenda item number eleven.
Item number eleven, any other business counselors or others may have relating to Lewiston City Government.
Councilor Ray.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to take a moment since June first and wish a happy Pride Month. I also wanted to ask the mayor to issue a proclamation for Pride Month in June. Which has been a tradition for many mayors past. I think you did one last year too, but we asked at the end of the month, so. Wanted to do that in recognition in recognition of our LGBT QIA plus community.
Yeah, so I'm not sure. I missed party. I've already done a resolve.
It's already out there, okay.
So check with Dottie and she can get that.
Where are those posted?
I don't know.
That's my question.
Usually a request come in and we submit that to them, but I don't know actually where it goes from it. Well, Dennis might be able to help us with that.
Where do those live?
I actually need to confirm that. I do believe, I I know they're posted on our website at times. I just don't know of every proclamation if they have a a place they live, so I can, I don't know if our city clerk happens to know where those are. Posted. If not, then I'll certainly get the confirmation for you.
Right, my understanding, Counselor, is that the. A copy is presented, if there's a group requesting the proclamation, then a copy is presented to them. The originals live in a file folder in my office. I'm not really sure if they are on the website, so that's a really good observation. I think that's something we can discuss via staff tomorrow. Because absolutely, they should be available on the website for the public to view and our social media. So thank you for the suggestion. It's probably just. An oversight and typically when we would meet in person, of course, the sponsoring groups or representatives would attend and receive a copy of that. Have a photo op and whatnot for some publicity, but obviously we haven't been doing that for about a year and a half, so. It's a really valid observation that they probably should be codified and posted on the website, so thank you for that observation.
And a big thank you to Mayor Care for already being ahead of the ball.
And, you know, I will share. So one thing that did change this year is we all requests. Now go through a vetting process with the city administration. We just found that occasionally we were asked to do ones that, you know. Could have been, could be seen as controversial, or I think Portland had an issue not too long ago where they took a stand on one and. Some negative information came out about the group. And so I just, at that point, I decided it's too risky and that we should vet these, so. And some are quite simple. There's no reason for extensive vetting. So thank you, Councilor Ray. Councilor Lejoy.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Clement has brought up a good point in regards to meeting in person. And I really think it's time that we pursue that avenue. Especially for executive session where continuity is an important factor. So I'm not sure what steps I should take. I don't know if I can make a motion that. We discuss that at the next meeting or something like that, so whether we can vote on it, but I think it's time, I really do. So I guess that's my spiel. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll let the city administrator weigh in, but I don't see an issue with getting this on an agenda.
Certainly, that that's really ultimately, I think what we need is just the direction from the council, if that's what they'd like to do. I believe the chambers are. Set up accordingly in a safe manner now, you know, appropriate for us to be able to utilize them. And even allow members of the public, obviously, we'll have staff there. To do crowd control on and some of that and manage the the spacing and stuff, but. Ultimately, if the city council wanted to set a date of, say, for example, June fifteenth is our first meeting back. That would be perfectly fine. Staff is ready, willing and able to to make that happen at the earliest convenience of the council.
So we could get it on the agenda for June fifteenth and then a future meeting would be in public, is that?
We could certainly, whatever the desire of the council, we could certainly put it on agenda for discussion. I don't believe it needs action from the council for us to return to. The chambers in in person. It's ultimately. Again, I'm happy we can put it on next week for a workshop if there was further discussion, you know, desire there. But ultimately, if the city council has got an interest to get back in person, staff ready and and able, we just need the. The direction to do so.
Okay, is anybody else that, so Councilor Joy, your hands still raised. Do you, did you have another comment or?
Yes. Yes, yes. Is it permissible for me to to make a motion that we meet in person? Is it fifteenth, you said?
We'd need a motion to what?
Move to suspend the rules to add an agenda item.
Very good.
So. But if we could, let's let's see general support from the council. Can others weigh in on this? So thumbs up for people that would be generally supportive of meeting face to face. So, okay, so a lot, everyone, not everyone, but. Zach, do you have some concerns? Yeah, go ahead. So let me, I'm sorry, yeah, Councilor Pat Gil, let me just go to Councilor Clement because he's had his hand up and then I'll go right to you.
As long as I say, Mr. Mayor, if want to do this formally, a suspension of the rules and take a vote tonight. I certainly would accomplish it, I would think, and I would show the sentiment of the council. And I do have one other item once we get this all absolved.
Thank you, Councilor Pat Gil.
My, it it's not really an issue with the item, but I I think a discussion needs to happen on the logistics of how this is going to work. You know, for both counselors and for the the public with with all of this and how all that's going to be, because I'd hate. I hate to see us do this. Willy nilly and have to work through the mistakes on the ground as opposed to at least taking a meeting to discuss it. And then move forward with it from there.
Yeah. So I think that makes sense. There probably should be. So that would require a little bit of discussion, but again, Councilor Joy, if you want a motion to suspend the rules this evening. That that would be your call.
Yes.
Okay, so there's a motion.
I would like to suspend the rule this evening.
I would second the motion.
Okay, moved and seconded, moved by Councilor Joy, seconded by Councilor Ray. And I'll turn it over to the council. Any questions or comments reference to this item? Councilor Ray?
I think, uh, Counselor Pat Gil, I hear you about not having the stumbling blocks moving forward, but. Hearing the city administrator reassure us that if this is the world council, they'll they'll get it done. I totally trust and believe in that. I think. We've had stellar MIS support through this nightmare of eighteen months or however many months it has been, and so. I really appreciate all that city staff has done to get us to this point, but. We're really missing something by being online all the time, it feels like.
Any other questions or comments?
Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Would we need to vote on the suspension of the rules and then any motion to be taken up thereafter, I believe?
Yeah, that's the next, the first vote will be suspension of the rules.
Yep, okay.
So not seeing any comments, call the roll.
Counselor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
And this votes to suspend the rules?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Word three?
Yes.
And word four?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay, now entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I would move that we place this item on our workshop agenda for next Tuesday for further discussion. And we can vote at that time as to whether to resume either second meeting this month or whenever we should decide. But it gives us a chance to discuss and then take a vote at that time on the actual. Resuming of in place meetings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? So city admin.
Second the most.
So, yeah, we have lots of hands. So Councilor Ray?
Thank you. So I I thought Counselor Joy's intention was to bring us back in person on June fifteenth, but Counselor Clement's. Motion is to discuss bringing us back in person after June fifteen. Am I tracking everyone? And Counselor Lejoy, you agree with that?
Yes, yeah, I I think we should discuss it first. I think that's the better idea and then we can vote on it. And then we can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much for. Thank you so much for that clarification. I think the digital setting, we know Counselor Lejoy is on a delay and I just value hearing his opinion. So it's like the sooner I can hear you in person, the better. But if you're good with that, then I am.
Thank you, Counselor Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I'm okay with adding it to an agenda. I mean, I don't know if we necessarily need a workshop. Can we just make it an agenda item, discuss what we need to and then vote on it after? So I don't know if we need the workshop, could be wrong. Yeah, but I mean, kind of like the the message I've taken all along is if like one of the counselors isn't really comfortable meeting, then I'm probably not going to be also. I'd much prefer to be back in person. But I don't want to make any of my colleagues uncomfortable. There's only seven of us, well, eight, nine and 11 kind of the group. So if another counselor does have some hesitancy, I'll probably vote no against it, but I'm okay with us discussing this as a council.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Pat Gil.
Thank you. My my concerns, you know, I want to see what the the plan is to allow the the public to be able to have access to the council. You know, we've we've said last time I was in the the chambers, they've got the the partitions and there's like 10 seats in there as opposed to whatever the the normal amount is. But making sure that the public has access to the council is, you know, something that that's of the utmost importance. And then the hardest, the hardest heartburn that I have about this whole thing is, you know, we went from all of these mandates to nobody's mask, you know, except for schools and daycares now. And in a couple of weeks, we're going to see if there's a spike or not. I'm really hoping that there's not, but I'm not hopeful of that. And the the fact that even though we've removed all of these mask mandates, the quarantine measures are still in place. So that that's gonna, that's going to be a significant impact to to people if there is a increase in these cases. So that's, those are, those are things that all of those things are what weighs heavily on on my mind when we when we talk about these measures here.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or any further questions or comments from the council? To the public? Yeah, his hand's been raised in reference to another matters. Is that correct, Counselor Clement, or do you have something on this matter?
Correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. To the public. Okay, back to the council. Call the roll.
Counselor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
We're voting to workshop this on the eighth. Okay, yes.
Thank you. Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
And word four?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Clement.
Okay, we have it back. I just bring up something. I'm not sure whether this would go out to administrator or Public Works Director, but over the last two nights, for business reasons, I've been at the police station in the wee hours of the morning. And I noticed that the front entrance of our police station is quite dark. And it is my understanding that the night before last, a victim who had been in the police station was assaulted quite severely outside the police station by somebody who was involved in in some type of an altercation earlier that was being handled by the police. And I parked there in front of the station, right in front of the main entrance. And I said, you know, it's kind of dark down here. Maybe we could get some kind of a spotlight or a street light up closest to the main entrance to the police station on Park Street. I I think that would do something. I mean, people go there with the idea that that is kind of a a safe haven. And in this case, the victim's father, I believe, was assaulted by a member of the other, the other side of the altercation of some kind. So I think that maybe if that were lit a little bit better down there, it might dissuade some of that type of activity. If folks have any question about that, I would encourage them to go down after the hour of darkness and park right in front of the front doors and think if that's a place you'd like to be walking by yourself. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have one item to bring up to the council. So in a little over two and a half months, the bicentennial parade will be visiting the Lewiston Auburn area. It's going to be one of the biggest events this community has hosted in nearly a quarter of a century. However, because of the pandemic, it was canceled and we weren't even sure that it would happen this year. So we have no targeted budget for that. We have groups that are willing to help the city to sponsor events during that day. And I'd like to see if I could get it put on the agenda. And it might work out well because we might be able to vote as well on the the getting back to meetings again. But I was hoping that I could have a special council meeting along with our workshop next week to authorize city administration to find the funds and then under his discretion, utilize those funds. I think I'm looking, you know, some ways around $5,000 to have activities both before and after the parade. And so I'd like to get the nod potentially to move this forward to a vote of the council if people are supportive of that. And again, it's going to go through the vetting process with finance and stuff. Yeah, I don't want you to think I'm assuming anything. All right, in general, can can we have a thumbs up again if people are supportive of that? Okay. All right, so I'll leave it up to the city administrator exactly when it gets on the agenda. I'm hoping we'll be able to figure it out for next week. But if that's not possible, then as soon as possible. All right, thank you. Okay, with that, if there's no other other business, so entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title I, Section 4056C to discuss an economic development issue of which the premature disclosure of the information would prejudice the competitive bargaining position of the city.
Almost.
Second motion.
Moved by Counselor Khalid, seconded by Counselor Clement. Call the roll, please.
Counselor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
And word four?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Does anybody need a break before we go into executive session? Okay, let's take five and we'll see you there shortly. Thank you.